The City Crystal Council to order at this time. Let's start with roll call.
Councilmember Banks.
Present.
Councilmember Budishevsky.
Here.
Councilmember Cummings.
Here.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Here.
Councilmember LaRoe.
Here.
Councilmember Parsons is absent, and Mayor Adams.
Here.
We have a form.
All right. Let's stem for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have an agenda before us. Looking for a motion on the agenda. Go ahead, Nancy.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, looking for a second. Brendan?
I second that.
Members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. Next, we have a proclamation. Small business proclamation for Saturday. I'll read that into the record at this time. Whereas creating a thriving business climate is a top priority for the City of Crystal and the City Council. And whereas the City of Crystal celebrates our local small businesses and contributes in the contributions they make to the local economy and the community. And whereas for many local residents, the Thanksgiving holiday kicks off a season of gathering, dining, shopping, and experiencing arts and culture. And consumers know that supporting small business, independently owned businesses have a positive social, economic, environmental impact. And whereas the City of Crystal has partnered with Hennepin County and Hennepin County Housing and Redevelopment Authority to launch the multi-jurisdictional Love Local Campaign, which encourages residents to support local businesses that create jobs, boost the local economy, and make our communities vibrant and livable. And whereas the public and private organizations across the county have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Jim Adams, Mayor of Crystal, Mayor of City of Crystal, do hereby proclaim November 26, 2022, as Small Business Saturday in the City of Crystal, and urge the residents of our community to support small businesses and merchants on Small Businesses Saturday and throughout the year. Proclaiming this 15th day of November, 2022. Next, we have a consent agenda before us. I will read that into the record as well. The council will consider the following items, which are routine and non-controversial in nature, in a single motion, the approval of the minutes from the following meetings. The City, Crystal Council Regular Work Session on October 13, 2022, the regular meeting on October 18, 2022, and regular work sessions on October 18, 2022, and a special meeting on November 1, 2022. Approval of the list of license applications submitted by the city clerk to the city council. That list is on file in the city clerk's office. Adoptions of a resolution accepting donations. Adoption of a resolution authorizing a grant application to Hennepin Youth Sports Program for improvements at Welcome Park. Adoption and resolution making the city annual insurance elections. That is our agenda. Looking for a motion on this. Brendan?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, looking for a second. John?
I'll second that motion.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. All right, open forum is next. Darren, you filled out an open forum request. We actually have a different part of the agenda where we'll deal with your comments, if that's all right with you. Unless you wanted to go ahead and use that open forum for something different. Okay, very good. Sorry, I forgot my bookmarks. Next is the 25,000 dispersments of $25,000 or greater. And I will read those into the record here in a second. So we've got a pretty good list here. These are dispersments of $25,000 or greater. First item is midpair for the employee city required contributions for payday 10, 14, 2022, $63,558. Acoustics Association, Inc., for new public safety building project costs for $60,751. Ebert Construction for project costs, police project costs, $58,979. George F. Cook Construction for police building, $80,711. Interium, Inc., for public safety building project costs for $424,12. Cross Anderson for project costs, $74,231. Laketown Electric for public safety building for $175,584. McDowell Company for the police building, $104,289. Multiple Concepts Interior for public safety building, $29,201. Northwest Asphalt for 2022 utility reconstruction, number five, $621,554. RTL Construction for new public safety building project costs, $68,868. SEH for 2022 utility reconstruction engineering for $30,161. Toplight Contract Glazing for new public safety building project costs, $53,507. Met Council Environmental Services for wastewater service for November, $142,050. West Metro Fire Rescue Relief Association, fire state aid received from Minnesota is $298,047. Gillan Chevrolet Cadillac for 2022 Chevy Silverado to replace truck number 428, $49,130. Logis for monthly application, support, and hosting, $36,625. Park Construction Company for 2022 street resurfacing project, $57,430. Peterson Companies, Inc., Central Core Stormwater Project, Excel Energy for September city building electricity costs, streetlights for $28,468. Midpair for employee required contributions for payday 10, 28, 22, $67,346. Total dispersments of $25,000 or greater are $3,343,130 and 71 cents. Are there any of those items the council would like to talk about? Any questions on any of these items? All right. Looking for a motion. Go ahead, John.
Make a motion approving the list of dispersments over 25,000.
All right, thank you, looking for a second. David?
Second that.
All right. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. Quite the list.
You need some water after that?
What's that?
You need some water after that?
Oh, all right. What did I do with my hit list? All right. The council will consider civil penalties for violation of liquor license regulated by regulations by Cousins LLC, doing business as Adair Liquor located at 61, excuse me, 6,001, 42nd Avenue North. We have our city clerk here, Chrissy, to address the council on that item. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. A few weeks ago, staff received notice from the Alcohol and Gambling Enforcement Division that Adair Liquor provided alcoholic beverages to another liquor store under common ownership for resale of the product and engaged in an unlicensed wholesale transaction, which are violations of 340A Minnesota statutes and city code. A notice of violation was sent to the owners and the managers on November 3, 2022, and this is considered a third violation for this licensee. Staff is recommending Adair Liquor receive a 10-day license suspension and a civil fine of $2,000, with the city clerk determining the dates and license suspension and payment date of the fine. There is a representative here tonight from Adair Liquor to address the council, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Questions for Chrissy? Yeah, go ahead.
It says common ownership on the form we're given. Can you speak to what that means?
Councilmember Cummings. The business, the main business, also owns a liquor store in Marshall, Minnesota.
Got it, thank you.
All right, Nancy?
According to the documentation from the Alcohol and Gambling Enforcement, it shows that they had received a liquor license suspended for three days and a fine of $500 to this agency with this ruling, correct?
Councilmember LaRoche, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Clarifying, so that's what they've already, that's what the state has levied already? Three day and 500?
Let me go back, Councilmember LaRoche, my apologies. They did pay the fine. The suspension was if they did not pay the fine.
Oh, okay, thank you. No, no problem.
Councilmember Banks, I'm sorry, your question?
I was saying, that's what the state, that was the state penalty?
That is correct. That is what the state imposed.
All right. Any other questions? All right. At this time, I would ask the representative from Adair Liquor to please feel free to step forward. Introduce yourself.
My name is Darren Williams. I'm the GM for Cousins LLC.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification. All right. Are you disputing the charges?
Not so much disputing. I guess I'm here just to kind of explain what happened.
Okay.
I've been over at Adair for eight years now. It was under two different owners now. The old owner had a sister liquor store that I transferred product to. It's not so much a shared, it was purchased. And then when we ran out at another store, we'd bring it to that store. I had absolutely no idea there was a problem with that. If I would have known there was a problem with that, I would never have done that in a million years. I was away down in South Carolina running a couple stores down there for the bosses, where in fact I was sharing product between the two stores, again, not knowing. While down there, it wasn't a problem. I told the boss up here that it wasn't a problem. He basically did what he did off of what I had told him, not looking into it any further. So the problem that Adair got into was virtually my fault, and my fault alone, and that's why I'm here today.
All right. So so there's, you're not asking for a public hearing then?
No, I just assumed be able to pay a fine, if not a little bit more, but to try to stay away from the suspension as much as we could today.
All right. Does the council have any questions? Go ahead.
So you're saying that this is not the first time that you've transferred product between the stores?
I've been a manager now in the liquor industry for eight years, and never once has anyone told me, no owners have told me that it's a problem me taking product that's been purchased at one store and take it to their other store that's run out. Never once was that even brought up, and even down in South Carolina, the year and a half that I was down there, where I was doing it.
This store, which is in Marshall, Minnesota, they're not able to reach out to their wholesale distributor and be able to get the product from them?
Sometimes, depending on the areas, you're able to get things that other stores aren't. And they were just weren't able to get that product down there, and they kept running out when they did because it was such limited amounts that they were able to get. So again, I told the boss it wasn't a problem sharing between two stores. He did that based off of me not giving him any reason up until that point to not trust me. It was an honest mistake on my part, and I'm just only here tonight again to explain what I did wrong and to apologize for that.
Thank you. But one last thing is, you were here last month because, right? Because you failed the compliance?
I wasn't in town, I was in South Carolina.
Yeah, you were in South Carolina.
Correct, correct. I heard about that happening. Again, I wasn't here, so I can't speak about that at all.
Yeah, I'm not asking you to, but this is not the first time we've had trouble with Adair Liquors.
Another reason why I think the bosses brought me back is a little bit of the trouble that they'd been running into and maybe for me to get things back into order, so to speak.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none.
Again, my apologies.
All right, thanks, Darren.
Thank you so much.
All right, conversation, any?
I don't think there's much for conversation on this.
Well, I mean, I guess I'm trying to understand what's it now, and it makes sense. So it's a violation to, even when it's under the same owner, like the ownership, you can't share, you can't share inventory with, under the same ownership in Minnesota.
Right.
I'm just curious if, you know, for not knowing this, is that a common thing for people that own stores to not know that this is not legal? I'm having trouble with that one. I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, David.
My kind of question was kind of on that lines, you know, like the city has trainings, you know, but that's probably more compliance checks.
Yeah.
I'm wondering if there's like a state training, or I don't know how, it seems, it's a little baffling to me that they wouldn't know that necessarily. And I get between different states and all that, but I figured there'd be like some kind of state training or some kind of way to let businesses know, you know, you can't do that kind of thing.
Chief?
Mayor and members of the council. So prior to a liquor store obtaining not just the license from you, the Alcohol and Gambling Agency out of the Department of Public Safety also provides information to the owner of what they can and cannot do.
Okay, good information. Any questions for chief?
Sure.
Go ahead.
So every year, do they, does the state go through these guidelines with them?
I don't, Councilmember Budishevsky, I don't know about that, if they do it annually. I do know that when it becomes a business, they do it then. So I don't know if it's provided annually.
Because we've had, just to follow up here, but we've had, you know, situations where we've had transfers of ownership of liquor stores, and the new owner has made assumptions based on just, you know, thinking that they, because they purchased a business, they're good to go, you know? Is that?
Councilmember Budishevsky and mayor, members of the council, I would hope that if I were to become a new business owner, that I would research and educate myself with the laws in the state of Minnesota.
All right. Any other questions? You only have a motion? John?
I make a motion based on the staff report, including the findings contained therein and the other information presented regarding this matter, that a penalty of $2,000 and a 10-day license suspension be imposed in this case.
All right, looking for a second. Therese?
I will second that.
All right. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is John Elholm, our recreation director. He's going to address the council on a resolution awarding a contract for the pedestrian bridge. Welcome, John.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. We're here tonight for two purchase items, first being a prefabricated truss bridge for Bassett Creek Park. We've been talking about this for about a year now, but the map up there shows where the bridge is. And then you may recall the old pedestrian bridge, the reason this conversation started was that it was approximately 40 years old, could not support the weight of maintenance equipment, and because of that was not plowed in the winter. So trying to make the conditions better in the park. The new pedestrian bridge will be 64 feet long and 10 feet wide. It will support the weight of maintenance equipment and will be installed with a slight slope that will meet ADA standards. So one of the issues with the old bridge is it was really not great for accessibility. This one will have, the one end closest to the ball fields will be higher than the end on the other side, so that it will be an accessible route. The pedestrian bridge purchase includes two parts. The first, what we're here for today is for the prefabricated truss bridge. So they build the actual bridge structure off-site and bring it into the park, and then set it on abutments. The other part is the abutments themselves, and we will likely bid that in January, when we bid some other projects. We tried to get quotes on that, and that was in the memo, that we weren't able to use those quotes. There's $375,000 available in the Parks Fund for this project, and the watershed permit was approved on October 20, and the DNR permit just got notified yesterday that that is approved as well. So the quotes we received, three companies. Art Thurston, Inc. was the low at $73,300. So the recommendation is to approve the attached resolution entering into agreement with Art Thurston, Inc. to provide and deliver a 64-foot by 10-foot prefabricated truss bridge for Bassett Creek Park in the amount of $73,300, and then authorizing the mayor and interim city manager to sign the agreement. Any questions?
Yeah, go ahead, David.
Not really a question, but just kind of a comment. I'm the liaison for Parks and Rec Commission, and it feels like every month we kind of talked about this. You've done a nice job kind of explaining what's going on, and it's been obviously a lot longer process than everyone wanted, but you've got to get it figured out. I know it's something that people really want figured out, but you've done a nice job kind of keeping them, keep the Parks and Rec informed. And I think they've done a, they've done a good job asking questions, kind of worrying about that too. And, you know, we wish it was done last year, but hey, some things, you know, a bunch of things come up sometimes when you're doing projects. So that's just my comment on that.
Appreciate it, thank you.
All right, go ahead, Nancy?
For the abutments, John, is that a separate motion? Is that, or was that approved? I'm sorry, I don't remember the...
Yeah, so we'll go out for bid in January.
Okay.
And then once those bids come back, and then we'll, we'll come back to the council. We'll actually come to the council probably December, requesting authorization to go out for bid. And then once they come back, then we would ask for approval of a contract.
Okay, so if all goes well, we're looking at spring-ish?
Yeah, late winter, early spring.
Okay, great. Can't wait.
Their timelines were six months, I thought.
Yeah, five months for the truss bridge, approximately.
Yeah, and I think they had a month before that as well, so. Kind of a design.
It was a month for the design and then four months, I think. So I just combined it into five.
Oh.
Approximately.
I missed that nuance, sorry. Okay. All right, any other questions? Looking for a motion, Nancy?
Make a motion to support the purchasing of a, I can't say this word, prefabricated truss bridge, too many Rs, for Bassett Creek Park.
All right, looking for a second? Go ahead, David.
Second that.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
The next one is purchase of lighting system for Becker Park, for the hard surface courts there. The current lighting is very old, and I think it doesn't work very well. So it's the old system that when you turn them on, they flicker, and then they're on a timer when you push the button, and then when they go off, you push the button again, and then they flicker for a while before they come back on again. So the idea is to replace them with LED lights, very similar to how we've done at some of our hockey rinks and ball fields. We'll reuse the poles like we've been doing in quite a few other projects. And again, in this one, this is a two-part project where today we're purchasing the light fixtures and controls, and then when they come in, we'll hire an electrician to install the light fixtures. So we have $75,000 that is included in the 2023 Parks Fund. We're ordering them early. They won't arrive till 2023, so then it's a 2023 purchase. So the request is, lighting can be purchased through the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program at a reduced rate. So that's Musco Sports Lighting for $56,090. So the recommendation today is to approve the attached resolution entering into agreement with Musco Sports Lighting to provide and deliver a lighting system for the pickleball and basketball courts in Becker Park in the amount of $56,090, authorizing the mayor and interim city manager to sign the agreement.
All right, go ahead, Nancy?
John, with the electrician estimate, and I know prices fluctuate, do you anticipate any sharp increases next year? Or when it comes time to do that? Or is labor pretty?
So last year, we had a court of roughly $18,000, and that included putting the buttons in, you know, for, because we moved those. And we had them do that, because it was, so we anticipated it should be less than $18,000.
Yes, okay, thank you. I won't, I have to say I won't miss running out of the court to turn on the light when we're playing pickleball this fall.
Yeah. If you're showing up, press the button. If you're leaving, press the button.
Exactly.
If nobody's coming and going, you send someone out to press the button. So functionally, will it still be kind of a timer?
Yes.
And it will be the same button?
Same button. It'll be on a...
We can program that to be more than 30 minutes or whatever?
And the one thing we're looking at too, and I'm not sure if the system does it, I think it does though, is that it can blink a little bit before it actually goes off.
It give you a warning?
Oh, yeah. But even so, if it goes off, it will come right back on, correct?
When you push the button, it will come right back on.
Go back, press the button right away, and it'll come back on right away, instead of that half hour wait. I like it. All right. Any other questions? Seeing none, looking for a motion? I'll make the motion.
Oh.
Well, you know, you guys know I like pickleball. Resolution in support of purchasing the LED lighting system for the pickleball and basketball courts at Becker Park.
Second that.
All right, thanks, David. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries.[1641.14]
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, the council will consider a resolution approving the purchase of body cameras. Our police chief, Stephanie Reving, is here to address the council. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As you know, the police officers have been equipped with body cameras since 2017. Full disclosure, in your memo, I did not put this, and I apologize, I should have. What I should have said was that last year I would have came before you, because we did have the money allotted for last year to purchase the body cameras. However, we were told by the Motorola that, um, because of COVID and other things, that we wouldn't be able to get them, and so we might as well just hold off on ordering them. So, that brings us to now, and to the memo before you. Uh, we have been told by Motorola that we can go ahead with the purchase. Uh, we do have sufficient funds. We are going into an agreement with them, where we will purchase the 34, uh, body cameras for, um, the police officers in a five-year period. So, I'm just looking for an approval of the, uh, resolution before you.
Yeah, that seems like yesterday, doesn't it?
It does.
Wow. Okay. Any questions for our chief?
Quick question. Um, are the cameras like faster, or is it-
Yeah, great question.
-new technology or anything like that?
No, great question. Thank you for bringing that up, Councilmember Cummings. So, we have been having issues with the cameras that we've had since 2017, many of which we've had to, uh, give back to the company, and then we can't get a new one because of the, um, reason they just don't have the old ones any longer. And so, yes, the new cameras are, uh, much more well-equipped to work with our server with Logis, and also just a faster piece of equipment.
Cool.
Nice.
Very good.
How about quality, image quality? Has that improved too?
It has. Much better.
Okay, great.
Any other questions? Looking for a motion? Brendan?
Make a motion, uh, approving the, uh, for the, for the resolution approving police equipment revolving fund expenditures for purchase of 34 body cameras and other necessary equipment for installation purposes.
All right. Nancy?
I'll second.
All right. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, next we have, uh, the council considering a labor agreement between LELS, Local 44 Police Officers for 2023 to 2025, and we have our interim city manager, Kim, to address the council on that.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Um, I am here before you tonight to recommend approval of the 40, Local 44 labor agreement with Local 44, which is our police officer unit. Um, earlier this year, if you recall, in January, we met with our labor attorney to discuss future contracts, and, uh, settlements have been approved already this year for Local 49, as well as the non-represented, uh, employees for 2023. We were able to negotiate a three-year contract with this unit, uh, for 2023, 2024, 2025. The wages call for a 3.25 increase in all three of the years. However, in the year 2023, there is a market adjustment of 5.5%. Same insurance as with the, uh, other units, where we share in the increased costs, and we will have a slight increase, uh, in the cost towards dental insurance of $5 for those employees who take single coverage. And, those are the cha, only changes in this contract, and we will have reopeners, I'm sorry, for 2024 and 2025, to reopen for the sole purpose of negotiating the health insurance. Uh, the 2023 preliminary budget does include sufficient funds for this proposed settlement, and the settlement is also consistent with the wage settlements and agreements with Local 56, which you'll have, uh, on the agenda next, as well as non-represented employees and other non, other metro cities, and with the council direction, and I do recommend approval. Questions?
All right. Any questions for Kim? Seeing none, looking for a motion?
I can make a motion.
All right, go ahead, John.
Make a motion to approve a labor contract with LELS, Local 44, for 2023 through 2025.
Looking for a second? Go ahead, Brendan.
I second that.
All right. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for all your work on that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it was, uh-
Yeah.
It was something that needed, needed to be done, so good work. Next, uh, Kim is here to talk to us again about police supervisors. Go ahead.
Okay, so similar to what we just previously discussed with, uh, the 44, this is for the LELS contract with Local 56, which is our police supervisors. This contract is also for a three-year duration, 2023, 2024, and 2025. It does call for the same wage increases throughout three years, 3.25%. However, this one does have a 9% market adjustment for the year 2023. Uh, for, this also includes lieutenants. Lieutenants will not receive that market adjustment, but their wage, wage ranges will, uh, be adjusted. As outlined in the memo, insurance is the same as with other units, also sharing in the increase, as well as the $5. Uh, or actually, this one is a $15, because they were a little bit lower, they hadn't adjusted it last time, so it'll be a same $15, same insurance for dental insurance for those taking single coverage. This one does include some cleanup language, uh, related to longevity and educational incentive, taking out antiquated language in that section, and it also has a reopener for insurance for 2024 and 2025. The preliminary agenda, preliminary budget does include sufficient funds for this proposal, and is consistent with the other wage settlement, wage and benefit settlements that have been approved, and I do recommend approval.
All right. Questions for Kim? Go ahead.
No question.
Go ahead.
I was gonna go ahead with the motion.
Yep.
Okay.
I see no questions.
Make a motion to approve the labor contract with LELS, Local 56, the police supervisors for 2023 through 2025.
Okay, thank you. Brendan?
I second that.
All right. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you again. Um, next, we have our city attorney, Troy Gilchrist, here to address the council relating, uh, to a consider, to consider a resolution regarding the petition related to ordinance Welcome, Troy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. What you have before you is a memo and two resolutions. As you know, uh, we had a discussion during your November 10th work session about this. Uh, as the council knows, it adopted ordinance number 2022-06, making various amendments to your uniform development code. Under your charter, you all know that there's a 30-day delay, uh, before an ordinance typically goes into effect. There's two readings, and then adoption, and then the 30-day delay period. The reason that 30-day delay period is built in to your charter, which by the way, doesn't exist for statutory cities and some charter cities, um, is because you and your charter have a petition and referendum process. So, within that 30-day period, residents have an opportunity to submit, uh, or to try to gather a petition, uh, to stop the effect of the ordinance, and that's what's happened here. Uh, if you recall, at your last regular meeting, uh, we had a brief discussion about this. Uh, the city clerk did receive a petition, did verify the afternoon of that meeting that it was signed by more than sufficient number of, of petitioners to constitute a petition under the, under the charter, uh, and so obviously, we weren't ready to handle it in the two hours prior to the meeting, so I said I would bring it back to your next regular meeting, which is this meeting. Uh, we've had the discussion at the work session, I talked about it. Basically, what it, the way the charter deals with this, is that once you receive a petition, then at your next regular meeting, tonight, the council is required to make a decision on whether to either, uh, repeal the ordinance, meaning then it just never goes into effect, or you can reaffirm the ordinance. If you act to reaffirm the ordinance, it still doesn't go into effect, uh, until it goes to a vote of your residents at an election, either at a special election that's called in the upcoming year here. There's certain dates, and, and if you go that way, you have to pick one of those dates for the special election, or wait until the 2024 regular election, at which then a ballot question will be asked of your voters on whether or not the ordinance ought to go into effect. And if it's, if it passes, then it goes into effect. If it fails, then it does not go into effect. Um, so, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but really, the, the decision before you, and as I said, uh, because the packet materials needed to be prepared prior to your discussion at the work session, I just simply went with the approach of putting both resolutions in the packet, uh, and, and so the council certainly can have its discussion and then choose which way it wants to go with, with the, uh, with the ordinance. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Troy. Any questions for Troy? Go ahead, Nancy.
Actually, the question I had issued at our last work session was, and Chrissy, you answered it via email tonight, or today, correct? Um, my question was, what would the cost be for a special election?
Councilmember LaRoche, the estimated cost is $15,000 to $18,000.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Any other questions today? All right, so we've had very little conversation on this one.